I just said I don't know the boxes.
Uh, you know.
You have a lot of.
Thirty seconds. Oh, five seconds. That's a tone. All right, we'll bring the June twentieth twenty twenty three city council in order for state of pledgeable agents. Pledgeable agents to give the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, everybody for joining us tonight. We will begin by approving or amending the agenda. I'm gonna add sheriff's report ahead of consent agenda.
You need a second?
Well, we'll approve the whole agenda once if we have any other changes. Anybody else have any other changes or amendments?
No, I'll actually make a motion.
Well, thank you, Brent.
Second.
I'll second.
Whichever.
Uh, we'll get it. It beat you to it this time. Even though you tried to jump in ahead. All right, motion is second to approve tonight's agenda with the one addition of the sheriff's report on paper. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Hearing none, motion passes consent agenda. Those items on the consent agenda, which are considered routine or non controversial. Are included as part of the consent agenda unless a council member specifically requests that an item. Be removed from the consent agenda, considered separately. All items on the consent agenda are considered under one motion, a second out of vote. Any item removed from the consent agenda shall be placed at the end of general business tonight on the consent agenda. We have. The June tw- fifth twenty twenty three council meeting minutes. And we have the approval of fund transfer and claims listing. And then the city administrator conference attendance. Is there anything on the consent agenda tonight that anybody like to pull and consider separately? Otherwise, I take the motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Brent.
I'm letting you have the opportunity.
I second.
All right, we have an emotion and a second to approve the contention and as written, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Open forum, the public forum is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns to the council. The public forum be no longer than thirty minutes in length, and each presenter will have no more than five minutes to speak. Topics of discussion are restricted to local governmental topics rather than private or political agendas. The council may not just may discuss, but will not take formal action on public forum presentations. Is there anybody like to speak in open forum tonight? Oh, you know what? We missed. This is sheriff's report. Do what happens, John, when you're out of when you're out of sync with us here. Let's do I will. Paul said right after open forum. Anybody who want to speak in open forum tonight? Tina. If you would turn the microphone on there, Tina, when you jump up there. So green light, I pulled the button till the green light. There you go. There you go.
On Creekwood Drive. I just was looking at the agenda and just wanted to make a statement. First of all, welcome Kathy. I look forward to meeting you on Thursday. And the I guess item that I wanted to bring up was the uh conference, the city ministry conference. In Austin, Texas. Just wanted to um. Talk about that and see if it looks like an international conference. Um, wanting to be concerned with our spending and just making sure that that is a good. Portion of our tax city money to be spending on an international conference for our. New city administrator. Hopefully, there's more local. Opportunities for her to get some professional development. So I guess my concern is before you guys approve that to. Uh, take a look at the financial burden of that conference. That is all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. All right, anybody else wrote in form today? Hey, we'll close open forum. Deputy Pearson, we will move into the sheriff's report.
At first, I'd like to apologize for not making it to the meeting on the fifth. But not on my radar, so. Um, from the sheriff's office side of things, um, things really aren't any different than what they have been or. High priority calls have basically been alarms and medicals. About a dozen or so of each. Um, nothing major has been going on. Citywide. Three Rivers has brought on a seasonal. Community, a service officer as well, so they are actually having more coverage within their park system, which is helping us. Um, just with that presence of someone there a little more frequently, we haven't had this month. We haven't had any. Smashing grabs, as we would refer to them, um, between Clarity or Murphy Lake. So that's a huge plus because that's kind of a big thing that. Over the summer here, we're trying to figure out how to mitigate some of that. As numbers and people's school gets done, as numbers start rising, so. From the report wise, call wise, that's kind of where we're at. The other couple of things that we want to talk about were, um, there's the nineteen night coming up. Um, looks like based on looking at the website, the city already has that on there for neighborhoods and whatnot to be able to put in for it. Um, we will speak with the city council as we get closer, find out exactly what neighborhoods. Have requested and we'll figure out kind of our game plan on moving forward with that. Um, the other thing that we are working on deputy Strack initiated it last year, so it's be the second. Annual um safety camp at Clear Lake. We have a set date of August. Thirteenth from one to four P M. At Clear Lake again. Um, we're working on expanding it a little bit more from what it was last year. Um, we've reached out to the county highway department. They're working on bringing a truck pieces, uh, plow truck. Um, I don't know if anybody's familiar with shock P and their touch a truck that they do. Um, so kind of trying to expand it a little bit more like that. Um, spoke with the Three Rivers Maintenance. And they're gonna bring over. They got a couple of John year gators, lawnmower, some of some of that smaller equipment that they have right there. That they'll bring over as well. It's um, we got lifeline lined up or expired. Uh, we're working with other portions of our agency working with our canine or drone team is gonna be there. Um, our reserve unit, our explorer post. Um, so trying to again, trying to expand it a little bit more and. Make it more than just a couple of tables and a couple of rules. So. Um, if anybody has any other suggestions on organizations to get involved, um, we're always open to that. Um, we're also working on trying to get a couple of trucks. Um, out there to. Maybe help draw in a little bit more and make it a little more of an event versus just block it around. That is really where I'm at.
But the safety camp was a great event last year. I don't know if anybody went, but uh, that was pretty neat. Um, you know, the. The helicopter did come, but it had to leave almost right away because they had a call that had to go on. So that was interesting. The fire truck. Probably fire was there. They had to leave twice during it to examine calls to get to and and whatnot. So it's kind of neat to to add some other additional pieces into there. So.
Yeah, and. Our rec deputy, we're gonna bring out, I think the plan is to bring our snowmobiles in one of our boats out there. Um, and then obviously Jeff and I will be there.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So additionally, back to nineteen night, John, just to it, you know. Our website link directs people to the counties to sign up, so they'll all be in that with the county's signup sheet.
Yes, and we'll work with uh, Debbie Weckman, our meeting engagement deputy who kind of oversees all of that, show filter that back to us. Jeff and I and let us know what neighborhoods and then that's where we'll come in.
Perfect.
Come with you guys and and see how we wanna implement that and make our rounds.
Perfect. Sounds good. Well, thanks, John. The council members have any questions?
No. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Um, unrelated to me, um, Casey's addition does is working on bringing back their. Night um, I they they done one, I stopped it, Chad, what um, they were gonna try and maybe reach out to see about getting it on the city Facebook. Age when they do it, just. They kind of said it's like it doesn't need to be a. Just at our neighborhood, so.
Sure.
Uh, and Jeff and I are working on trying to be out there as well on on those things. So.
Yeah.
Try to be there for some of the different events going on.
Perfect. Sounds good.
All right.
Thanks, deputy. Appreciate it. Have a good evening. Be safe.
Will do.
Thank you. All right, let's move into uh, general business approval of C S T S mowing contract. Kathy. There you go.
There we go. Um, thank you. Tonight we have the contract for the C S T S. Um, different sites across the city. Um, for the council to approve. We had received a quote from Minnesota siding company. For doing the work. They have been the one that is the company that's historically been completing the work on the sites and and doing all the mowing. Um, when we received that, um, before I got here, my understanding is we then went out and we asked for some quotes for some. Other vendors and potential vendors just to see what alternatives existed. We did get a quote from Minnesota native landscapes. Um, so and their quote came in at twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars for two mowings of various sites for the C S T S. And Minnesota siding companies came in at thirty eight thousand five hundred and forty eight. Dollars. So we have an eighteen thousand dollar difference roughly um between the two quotes. Um, that we're looking at tonight. Given the difference in the amount and the newness of Minnesota native landscapes to the systems. We did have a meeting out at the sites. On on Friday afternoon to look at them, to talk to them about it. Um, the equipment that they were looking at utilizing and just kind of the service in general to ensure that we felt comfortable. With their service um and what they would be doing and how they would go about the mowing on the sites. Um, I did email Tyler today to see if he had any comments or input from it, but I think following the meeting and the conversations that we had, it was positive. Um, as we were there on the sites and looking at it in. It looks, you know, it sounded like they had similar plans for um equipment and so forth. We're doing, we're doing the uh, the mowing at the sites. So based off of that, I would look at it and say for the eighteen thousand dollar difference, um, I'd recommend that we go with Minnesota native landscapes. Um, they understood. The need to get in there fairly quickly once they get an approval this week and to uh, and to get mowing on them. Like I said, we met at uh, territory and looked at a couple of sites there and then Tyler was driving him around to the other sites to continue to kind of. Show them the different sites and the different locations.
Okay.
Yep.
Brent.
We we were waiting for this uh bid and. Probably should have moved about three weeks.
This is, yeah.
And it's pretty long. Absolutely. Um. Minnesota native landscape said that they could probably start next week. It might be a little slower for them because you kind of. Get it after you've done it a number of times. I have a little bit of a concern just because, you know, we've always looked at those drain fields and those mounds and trying to protect them. Um, but based on this uh. With natural systems feeling like they would do a good job. They've done others before. Um, it's a huge savings and um. I'll make a motion to uh, go with Minnesota native landscapes for the mowing this year.
Okay. Well, we've got a motion. Any other questions or comments on that before?
Well, I would just, I would just say that it's kind of a repetitive thing. So, you know, we see how they do the first. Yeah, there's room for correction need be and. So. With that, I'll second it.
Just one question. Uh, is there any history with the other vendor that uh? They come in, they do a poor job. Are we burning bridges? Are we be able to go back? I'm all for saving eighteen thousand dollars, but I just want to make sure that uh.
That's a really good, that's really good point, because if they don't work out and we go back to Minnesota sod, I'm sure they would do it. But you know how it is when you say to somebody bye bye and then. Um, we come crawling back. I don't, I doubt we would.
I wonder why their bid was so high. Wonder what the price difference. Is on that, that's uh.
It did ask me to pull up the previous year's um values on what we paid them. Um, twenty one and twenty two, they were our total bill was about twenty seven thousand in twenty twenty four. It was twenty four thousand. So you're going from twenty seven to thirty eight.
Thousand dollars more.
Well, they've gotten busy. I mean, Minnesota side has gotten busy. They. They do the twin stadium and you know, they do all the pro stuff. So, because you know, mowing is a. Very small part of. Of of.
Sorry.
Mowing is a very small part of what they do.
Yeah.
Um, and I and I do have. And I do have that concern, but I know that natural systems has used them in other places.
Minnesota native.
Yes, and um. I trust Tyler's judgment. He, you know, he. The care and feeding of the mounds. He's he's the guy and they have the contract to do it.
So the biggest thing is the proper equipment that doesn't weigh too much.
Yep.
And and just knowing where to mow and not knocking any of the bed pipes and stuff around and and.
Yep, I think we're, I think we're in a good situation this year because it's dry, so we're not going to have anything be real muddy or mushy to say. But you know, it comes down to about eighty eighty one, eighty two dollars per resident.
Right.
And I don't know if everyone understands, but this is a pass through to the folks with C S T S. So this isn't anything that.
It's not tax levy. It's off the rates from the.
Yeah.
From the we collect in the C S T S.
Right.
Sewer rates.
So and C S T S is is self-supporting on this, so we're just making a decision based on that, but. I I would think that the residents in the areas where we have. C S T S systems would. Well, I know they want to go up the lower bit, right?
Yeah.
Question.
And and yours as far as as long as Tyler believes that they're qualified, right? I mean, he's our subject subject matter expert with this, that they've used them before.
Yep.
Um.
Would it make sense to have someone else for the first time they mow to make sure they understand where the critical pieces are?
Well, and that's what I was gonna say is, you know, how are we gonna, how are they gonna know where to go? Minnesota signs done enough that they know where all the sites are. Is this something that will have Tyler?
Well, Tyler gave them a map. With the sites, as I understand it. And you know, they they looked at the the site there that's right across, right across the road from. Uh, the clubhouse of territory. Then we went up and looked at those. Tyler was gonna go to the other system. I mean, territory would be the largest.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, will they miss something the first time? Of course they will. They just will.
Yeah.
But. Yeah.
Yeah, I was more concerned about hitting something or breaking something because they didn't know.
Yeah. Well, there's T posts at the inspection points.
Okay.
Maybe not right there, but they're there. Now, will you see them? Uh, will you see a six foot T post with?
Should.
But um, uh, they seem confident, Kathy, I. I hate saying no to Minnesota sod because they've been a great partner of ours, but. You know, they they may be at the point where this just isn't something they want.
That that message to nine thousand dollars might be a a message of.
Yeah.
Hey, can we?
Yeah.
We we yes, we would like you to move on. He helps.
Yep.
Yeah. Well, okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve the uh, contract for the C S T S mowing for. Minnesota native landscapes for twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. Um. I'll take a vote. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right, next up, consider proposal for preliminary design of County State Highway um, forty four center sewer and water connection. Uh, Shane, I see that you're on. I think this is one of your items if you'd like to uh. Take it from here.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so this proposal is for the preliminary design of what we call the West Sewer Connection. Uh, and so that's the the connection that connects to the city of Savage. Lift station uh, just north of County Road forty four. Uh, it's literally the first property north of. County Road forty four, so it's maybe within fifty feet of the the edge of the right of way. Uh, this connection is kind of complex because of the number of agencies involved. Uh, we have the city of Savage who is gonna be interested in. The elevation and how we connect to their lift station. They'll also be interested in the alignment uh, within their city. Uh, we have Scott County because we'll be crossing County Road forty four, and so we'll be working with them to. Come up with an acceptable method for uh trenchless installation. Uh, underneath their county road. And then once we get to the to the south into the city of Credit River. Uh, we have the property owner of the P L A Realty. Uh, property, so Candace and Earl and trying to find an alignment that works for them and their future development goals. As well as we have a active mining permit or mining pit uh, going on on that property. And so trying to work with the the mining pit operator to find. Uh, in alignment that would, you know, be out of the way. Uh, and in trying to uh, figure out some kind of a solution. Uh, for a uh sewer and water main going through an active mining permit. Uh, and then lastly, we have the Met Council because this will be our connection point uh, to the metropolitan council system. Uh, will have a metering manhole and they have a few design parameters. Uh, such as access to the metering manhole and. Uh, some technical uh. Design parameters for fall across the manhole and and things of that nature. So because of all those, because of how complex this is, we feel it's, uh, this is our next step just to prepare for. Uh, sewer and water that even though it might be. Uh, off in the future, uh, four or five years. Uh, having a preliminary design that we can hopefully get everybody to agree to early on. Uh, will help us as, you know, if the Big Sky Skates, Big Sky Estates continues to develop. It will give them an alignment to design for. We can share this uh, design with their consulting engineer. Uh, and hopefully have. Uh, something that's acceptable as far as a a route uh, depth and. Uh, you know, maybe a kind of a interim solution and a permanent solution. Uh, as we we look into the future. So with that brief overview, I think I will stand for questions if there are any.
Okay, council members, any uh, questions?
Jay, for Shane or for? It's not necessarily a question to him. I think we can.
Okay.
Um, I'm just kind of curious to make sure that I understand how. Um. The the affected properties of this are actually covering the cost of this. Or. Not.
It, yeah, um, and I think that's more of a question, Dominique, you have. In finance question.
It's part of the budget, but if this is gonna be part of the sewer later on, so what generally happens is if. Those expenses are remembered. So for a minute, they be covered by the city, but then eventually.
Okay.
And and along.
Okay, how is that set up?
What do you mean?
So it would just be, if a project happens, it would just be a part of however the revenues are taken to fund the project, right? So whether that be. Rates, connection fees or assessments. Because we haven't got that part.
We haven't got to that part yet.
Right, I mean, this is kind of a. Piggy before the chicken, so. Hundred percent. Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, I think it was fun, especially, but that would be another.
Good.
Essentially down the road, we need to make sure that. Yeah, these costs that we front are. Covered. I understand the need to do it now. We all discussed that.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, okay, that's my question.
Right. Anything?
I think just more clarification on that, so. How technically are we doing that? So I'm envisioning, uh, you know, Shane says we're talking. Four or five years out. That just sits on the book then for four or five years before it gets. Uh, recouped. How's that? How's that one? And this is just coming out of general fund?
Um. Yes, we would consider a general fund.
Okay. So then.
It was budgeted.
Okay. So then, four or five years from now. Theoretically, the citizens, the residents not in that neighborhood that are being impacted by it, then actually. Potentially, yeah, I don't want to say that. Um, okay.
Well, it would be similar to when we have a road project, right? So we bond. And then over the next ten years, those monies are replenished. Over a ten year period, just all of it.
Or even a road project that we don't fund for, but we assess for.
Yeah.
Right?
Whatever.
Yeah, yeah. It's like we've done road projects and you something had, but we've done road projects where we funded it. Without bonding and then collected assessments over the next ten years to. Put that back in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Ernest.
That's, I was just gonna say, you you kind of start tracking now all of our costs on this project. And then as we go into it, it'll kind of in essence. I want to say it's an interfund loan, but it's kind of where you're getting to is we're doing this. We have to pay for it to get to the end. We need to get the designs. We can start getting some estimates. And once we start getting those estimates into place, then we can use those estimates to build out what the rates are that we need to. Pay for all of this infrastructure and everything else that's going into it. And then once we start getting those rates, all these costs are kind of built into what those rates are, and we pay all that stuff slowly back. And set it up for what we need to keep moving forward, but. We're without any structure in place right now. We've got, we've got to find a starting point. This is your starting point to get this design done. Um, kind of get everybody on board with what that design is. Then we can get some estimates going and then we can start figuring out. What are rates look like? What are these costs? How do we fund this with that infrastructure with rates?
I know there's been some communication with the the residents in that area, if I I remember right, um. How do we do it well such that? Uh. I'm I'm moving out, I'm moving in, I I'm. Olivia, how do we do it such that, you know, five years from now? All of a sudden, the street's getting ripped up and I'm now getting a huge assessment.
Do it often. Uh, you know, I think, and this is certainly something that probably could brought up to nominate in the neighborhood discussion.
I was actually thinking that my that's one of our topics that we're gonna talk about.
When I was reading through this this weekend, I I looked at that, and I think I'm gonna print that, take it with me.
Yeah.
You know that, you know, we can, we can help with that, but. When I, I think this is an important thing to get from now. There's other studies that we need to do with that because we have this massive, massive spending that needs to happen for an infrastructure there. And. As we all talked about, we need to have. We need to have the costs. We need to have some sort of a plan so we can start to say yes or no. I mean, I did, I wasn't able to attend the uh, meeting on the fifth. But I watched it and, you know, even that little section. Needs some discussion in that, and it needs to study to understand. How this is gonna happen. So I, I mean, I fully agree with funding this. Just let's figure out how to make sure that it gets paid for later, you know, by those by those that benefit for it. And and I say that being probably one of the first to benefit from it. I live in that neighborhood. So, you know, and I'm, I don't necessarily want to. Talk about holding my own neighbors to a cost, but you know, this is something that, you know, at the same time, there's all the neighbors. To the south of us that want nothing to do with us. So we, you know, we need to uh, we need to be fair to everybody. So with that. I don't know, if you entertain a motion, I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Okay, take your motion, Jay.
Second.
Second for Brent. Any other discussion or questions before we uh, vote on that? So make sure we.
I have just one more.
Yeah.
Shane, so it's a not to. I have just one more, Shane, so it's a not to exceed. Um, what do we, what do we think we're really talking about in the number of hours?
Um, I mean, this is so hard, uh, to estimate because I would say half of the scope involves dealing with outside agencies. And I, it's, I can't predict, uh, how fast or whether or not the property owner would like. Uh, the first design that we put forward, the third design, or if they'll change their mind in between, and there's several of those agencies. And that's why it's so important, I think, to, you know, this early on, to, to have a preliminary design that we can try to narrow in on. Um, as far as hours go, I mean, this proposal covers probably roughly two hundred and fifty hours. Um. You know, uh, hopefully, we, everybody, we have one meeting, everybody agrees and, and, uh. We come to consensus, it could be a lot less, but that's just not something that, uh. You know, I can forget.
And then from a staffing perspective, are we project managing inside as well, or how do we? Uh, just, I've just seen the behemoth come, right, and I, we've got a pretty small staff, are we relying completely on? Uh, the engineering firm to do project management of this as well, or are we somehow? Uh, making sure on our side, we're ensuring that what we ask for is what we're getting and when we're getting it on time and on budget.
Yeah, council members, Antonio, Mr. Mayor, I ex, I expect or anticipate that Administrator Reynolds will be. Uh, involved in any of the meetings with outside agencies that she's able to attend. Uh, and, you know, council members or, you know, if you want some periodic updates. Uh, we can certainly provide that. Um. Yeah, there, I don't think there's a lot of project management that has to go on at this point, I think it's a lot of. Uh, communications, um. You know, we, first, we need to prepare something that the other, all the other agencies can react to. Uh, and, uh. Once we get those reactions, I mean, the, the ultimate end goal is, is having an alignment and a design that. Uh, you know, in the next phase of Big Sky Estates is accounted for. Uh, we'll, we'll provide our work products to the other, uh, consulting engineering firm and auto pad, so they can just, uh, put it right into their drawings. Um. But it is gonna be a little bit tricky because, you know, of the active mining pit and. Uh, sooner, you know, there, there might be some conflicts and we, we just have to. Have a preliminary design and start these discussions to find out. How large these conflicts will be and whether or not we can overcome them with a reasonable solution.
Okay. One last question, and I'm, I've, I've frowned, I'm done.
Would hold you to it?
Yeah, do we have any kind of thought, uh, time wise, um? If you, I, I get all the different agencies and I get it's, it's herding cats, um, do we think we're talking, uh, twenty three, twenty four, twenty five? Uh, where, where do we think that this project, this limited project for the design is actually done?
Yeah, so this preliminary design I would hope to complete, uh, in twenty twenty three. Uh. The initial work product from my office will take, you know, probably three or four weeks to, to get in the, the queue for scheduling, and then another. Uh, four or five weeks after that to complete it, so, you know, maybe we're eight weeks away from, uh, providing something to the agencies. And then it's just really a matter of how fast they're able to review it, get back to us, uh, set up meetings and. Um, but my goal would be to complete this by the end of twenty three.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Alright, so I've got a motion and a second on, uh, the table here to, uh, consider the proposal, approve the proposal for the, uh. Design work of the County Road forty four center sewer and water connection, we'll take a vote on that, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Here in none, motion passes. And, um, I think that's it, we already approved the claims listing, so we should be, uh, down to adjournment. Anybody that's ready to make the, well, a council member leaves an update, I guess, if anybody has anything.
I was just gonna mention ditch mowing for those of us that live in rural areas. Has been, Mr. Kuchinka has been mowing and doing an excellent job, so you'll notice that you can see it corners and intersections.
Just got one thing, uh, since we have these neighborhood meetings at the parks coming up to this week and through the following week. We just want to put it out on the, uh, on the, uh, internet here or. To every, anybody watching when they are, and ask them to, uh, ask them to talk to their neighbors, so make sure we get a good turnout.
Yeah, we can do that, um, so tomorrow night, six thirty, Country Court Neighborhood. Thursday, six thirty, the Creekwood Park. Tuesday, the twenty seventh, in Casey's Park, and Thursday, the twenty ninth, in the Scottview Park. So again, it's kind of a, a meet and greet loose agenda, um, opportunity just to, you know. Connect with, uh, a couple of council members and, uh, and City Administrator Reynolds and, um, just engage in some conversation, so.
Bring a lawn chair.
Bring a lawn chair if you wish to sit down, yeah.
Oh, it's great.
Brad's great, the next, the next two days, bring a portable air conditioner.
Alright.
Cause at least in Creekwood, there'll be shade, and the country court park's pretty wide open. Uh, we'll make it a little suntan out there tomorrow night, so. Right, uh, but yeah, no, good thought.
Alright.
Perfect, alright, now we'll get into adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Abe.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Brent. Motion is second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Here in none, motion passes, thank you.